All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the joint session here of the Village Board and Library Board. It is Wednesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the Village Hall as well as on Zoom. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda, as well as an audio call and number. The Library Board will open up their session just after the Village Board does, because we're separate entities. So with that, the Village Board has a quorum and the agenda was properly posted.
Yep, the Library Board also has a quorum and the agenda was properly posted.
All right. With that, then we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, in case we have a number of people who would like to speak. So with that, either in the room or the Zoom, but we do have actually a few people in the room who filled out speaking forms, so we'll start with them first. So first up is Cindy Mats. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. At 720 Sandpiper Trail, number 110, Cindy wishes to speak. Cindy, just, yeah, just press the button. It looks like a little person's speaking in there, so it turned, should turn on. That way, the people on Zoom can hear you.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm Cindy Mats. I live here in Cottage Grove. I'm over in the Prairie Grove Apartments. Been here about four years now. When I moved here, I just want to really express my support for a library in Cottage Grove as soon as we can. I was really, quite frankly, shocked that we didn't have one. You know, we're such a forward-looking community, and, you know, the library is so supportive of our youth. And the location for this particular library is perfect. It's right between two different schools now. And so, you know, I just really want to express to the board, you know, my sincere support for a library. I use the library a lot myself. I am single. I do not have children. However, I think a library is extremely important for the education of our youth and our adult community as well. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm very supportive of a library in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, then, we have Cassie Mordi at 1300 Landmark Drive. Cassie, did I get that right?
Yes, Cassie, thank you. Yes, 1300 Landmark. A village resident for about eight years. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Library Board and the Village Board for going through this process of due diligence and seeing what a physical library could look like in Cottage Grove. I also want to thank the Library Board and subcommittees for all their efforts in working with FGM Architects to see this plan come to fruition today, and I'm really excited for all of us to look at it. Knowing where we're at with the financial realities of the village and that this vision that we'll see today probably will not become reality anytime soon, I just want to say that I'm here in support of the Library Board continuing its programming, as we've seen over the past, I guess it's been, what, nine months, maybe? How successful it's been, and it has reached all kind of corners of our community, new populations that are coming in, and really supporting them from the ground up and where they're at. And to see that go away, just because we don't have a physical footprint of a library, would be a shame, and it's something our community needs. So as we look forward, we may not have the finances to build a physical library, but I urge you all to consider making sure that that programming stays put in the future while we reexamine what a library in its physical form could look like. And to that end, I really do hope that we don't just shelve it for 10 years, but we think about other creative ways that we can maybe form partnerships or fundraise even more to take those financial burdens off of the village. So I encourage creativity as we move forward through this process and also keeping programming as a part of our foundational services in the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. All right, next, then, we have Nancy Engel. Nancy didn't indicate where she lives, but she indicated that she didn't want to speak, but please reconsider that libraries, putting it back as number-one priority. Libraries are a community resource for everyone, so thank you, Nancy. Next, then, we have Annie Schumanen.
Anne Shenanen.
Shenanen, I'm not reading that correctly. Anne is at 704 Herndon Drive, 101, I guess, in Madison. Doesn't wish to speak, but indicated that she'd lived in Cottage Grove for 36 years and does support the continuation of a library board and the work that has been done thus far. Anyone else in the room or on Zoom?
Hi.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is, I'm Katie Morrow. I have been a village resident for almost 16 years now. I currently live at 319 Stelling Grange in Cottage Grove. I'm a mom to five boys, a 14-year-old, an eight-year-old, almost seven-year-old, and twin, two-and-a-half-year-old. I am really sad that we're here to be meeting to see the final architectural report on a library that will not exist in my children's childhood. I am saddened to learn that the village trustees and administrators have not only taken money from the Friends of Cottage Grove Library, a nonprofit, but also the village residents, when the trustees had zero intentions of ever building this beautiful library, as was indicated at the May 15 Village Board meeting. I am grateful, though, and thankful that the Library Board has brought so many making library programs to the village of Cottage Grove. We enjoy each and every single one of them. Nothing makes this mama's heart happier than hearing her twins, who once were in speech therapy, cheer for storytime as we drive by or walk past the baby. I hope that one day that my kids as adults can enjoy the library and the future generations of Cottage Grove as well.
Thank you. I saw another hand raised.
Yeah. My name is Peter Dell, 901 Stony Hill Lane in Cottage Grove. Been a resident here in Cottage Grove for nearly 20 years. And, you know, I just want to speak out in the sense that, you know, the library programs certainly have been beneficial. I do echo Katie's comments in the sense that the September financial assessment of this, all four scenarios indicated that it's not financially viable. We certainly cannot afford it, and as Katie said, this isn't anything worth building. So for us, as a taxpayer in this community, for us to continue to invest time and money at this point in time on the library, to me, is just irresponsible of my taxpayer dollars and everybody else's taxpayer dollars in light of where the financial assessment put this. We do have a $10.5 million library about four miles from the site, the Penny Branch Library. I do use that. It's a beautiful library. It is certainly resource-intensive. Additionally, in our community, we've got four schools. They all have libraries. So the schoolchildren in our community are certainly not unable to get access to a library. And I think in light of the financial assessment that was done, for us to continue down this path, pouring money and time into something that is not viable at this point in time, to me, is just irresponsible. So, I mean, I understand it's a beautiful library. I looked at the deck. I can't disagree with the beauty of the property. We just can't afford it, and I think what I look for in my Village Board is fiscal responsibility, and I urge you to be more fiscally responsible as we spend very precious dollars that are very limited coming from our tax base and our taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room or on Zoom? Melissa? Oh, Melissa, please.
Good evening, Village Board. It's so great to see you guys. I'm Melissa Ratcliffe. I live in the village of Cottage Grove at 242 Foreston Drive. And I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into the library and looking into a library in Cottage Grove. I think it is very important that we continue looking at the library. I wish that it was feasible at this point to build the library, but I understand the finances of the village. So while it's not feasible right now, I do believe that it is important that we continue to have the Library Board. If we had kept the, if the village had kept the Library Board back in 2008, we would be in a very different situation now. The library at that time was only $7 million to build. Right now, $23 million is crazy compared to the $7 million that could have been spent, that we could have been raising funds over all these years. So if we don't continue looking at having this library and keeping the Library Board, we're going to put ourselves in more difficult financial situation in the future. Additionally, the programming that the Library Board provides is very beneficial to our community, to our residents, to our businesses. It brings people into our community that wouldn't normally come here. The variety of programs, the amount of programs, the age levels of programming is all very important. It brings people here. They don't just stay for the programming. They go to our businesses, eat at restaurants, go to Forward Pharmacy, you know, Piggly Wiggly, check out the rugby club, use our parks, enjoy our community, and that will bring benefits in the future as well, when they may move here or start a business here, because they didn't realize that Cottage Grove had all these great things going on. So I'm looking forward to the presentation, and I think that it is fiscally responsible to continue the programming, to continue to fund the Library Board, and to continue on a path where we get to a point where it is feasible to have a library in the future. Cottage Grove is growing. We're a large municipality that's continuing to grow. And a municipality of our size should be able to take care of our residents with the library here, not rely on other communities for that service. So thank you for your consideration this evening, and I'm looking forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Anyone else on Zoom or in the room? Oops. Please.
My name is Tom Olson, and I am the treasurer. I'm sorry?
Press the button?
Yes.
That looks like a person.
Yeah, there you go. Now they can hear you on Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Tom Olson, and I'm the treasurer for the Friends of the Cottage Grove Community Library. And I'm also a resident of the community of Cottage Grove, just outside the village. We have been here since 1977, and as Melissa said, we do have libraries nearby, and we have utilized those. And when we have gone to those libraries, such as Penny or Manona, we've also decided, you know, to go out to eat at those restaurants that are in those communities. And we've gone grocery shopping in those communities, and we've spent our dollars in those communities. So, you know, as a business owner in Cottage Grove, I really see value in having the library as one more way of keeping dollars in the community. And otherwise, I agree with the support of the Library Board and the support of the master plan, and I'm looking forward to the plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Do I press this again?
Please. Anyone else? All right, then, we'll move then to the actual presentation to the board from FGM Architects.
Okay, I normally stand for these things, but I'm going to sit so everyone can hear me by the microphone. So thank you, everyone, for coming and listening to our presentation today. We have had a really great time this past year, working with everyone. We've had a lot of really important conversations and discussions with everyone. So thank you, first of all, to the community, to the Library Board, and especially the Library Facilities Committee, who has dedicated a lot of their time this past year, helping us with this master plan. What we're going to do tonight, I think a lot of you have seen the report. So we're not going to go through it page by page, but we want you to understand how that report was put together, what the process was that we went through this past year. That'll kind of help guide you as you're looking through that report. First thing we want to talk about, why complete a master plan? Really, for any library, master plans are crucial. A library facility is one of the few in the community that has to accommodate every single person in your community, from birth to death, from all walks of life. They have to be able to provide those services. That's why a library is there. We all know that every community has their own unique needs, so it's important to do a master plan so that you understand what that particular community's needs are. And we recommend doing it on a 20-year plan, so that you can adapt and try to figure out what those evolving needs are going to be. We know that they are constantly changing. We also know that libraries usually don't have a whole lot of funding, so we want to make sure that we position you in a way that you aren't making reactive decisions. You're proactive. You know what that end goal, you know what you need to get to in the next 20 years. That's what the master plan is going to help set that framework for. Why a master plan here? So I said before, we've done a lot of work this past year. There's been a lot of work that was done before FGM came here. I know that was mentioned tonight, all the work that's been done. So a couple of things that has been done in the past few years, we wanted to highlight. We have up here, in 2019, the Library Planning Committee was established. 2020, there was a residential survey that went out to a lot of people. They had a great response to that, had a lot of positive feedback. 2021, the Library Board was established, and last year, there was a capital campaign feasibility study. A lot of people have mentioned the programming that has happened. They've been very creative in doing programming without facilities. Last year alone, they were able to engage over 800 individuals in library programming. I think they expect that to continue to grow as they move forward. So that gets us today with this completed master plan. How we did this, we usually do a four-step process in this. We try to be strategic about this. We want to make sure that it's thoughtful, that everyone feels like they have a space to add their input. And through this process, we want both qualitative and quantitative information. And with that, then, we can build consensus. We can prioritize from there. So the first phase we did was the discover phase. This is the phase where we really do a lot of engaging. We reach out, we listen, we try to understand, what are the unique needs of this community? What do you all want to do? How can we make sure that we have reached the largest group that we can? So we did that with a couple of workshops. The first one that we did with the Library Facilities Committee, it was an intensive two-day workshop. The first day focused a lot on vision, goals, intents. We do that first. We don't want to just come in and say, okay, how many study rooms do you need? How big is the collection? We want to take a step back and say, what's your vision? What are you trying to accomplish here? On the day that you have the ribbon cutting for this building, what do you want people to feel as they're walking through this space? That's what we want to accomplish that first day. The second day, then, is where we get into the nuts and bolts of, okay, what do you really feel this community needs? What kind of programs are you trying to have? What does that facility need to have to be able to serve your community? The next thing we did was a community engagement workshop. And for that, we had about 25 participants come, which is a pretty good number for this type of a workshop. There were several things that we did there. We went through the history of what has been done so far. We went through a design trends presentations for national standards for libraries, just to kind of get the creative juices flowing. And then we broke into focus groups. With those focus groups, we had five different questions that every group had. Other than that, they were allowed to discuss it, talk about it themselves. I think what's really interesting when we do these is that every group kind of took it in their own direction and had a lot of unique ideas. And then from there, everyone presented what they found, went through that. The other thing that we did before they left is we want to, again, try to get to that qualitative information. So we asked a couple of questions. You can see an example here on how they see the library and what you think the greatest opportunity for the library. Everything back, came back to community. We know that this is a community that's growing. It's a community that is transitioning from what it was, kind of trying to create what that identity is for the future. And everyone felt pretty strongly that the library can be the central core to what the future of this community is and can really help build that path for the community. Also, in addition to the engagement workshops that we were doing, others in the Library Board, Library Planning Facilities Committee, were also reaching out to other groups. One of the groups that they met with was the teenage group. I was amazed they were able to talk and sit down with 75 teenagers. I know if you all know teenagers, it's hard to get them to sit down and talk with you, but they had 75 teenagers that came and spoke with them. They were all very honest. They were all very supportive. And I think if I remember right, it sounded like some of the teachers were surprised we didn't have a library, but the students were sort of painfully aware that they didn't have a community library. So it was something they expressed a lot of interest in. They said there's really no place for them to go. They're kind of leaving the community after school, and that it'd be great if they could kind of stay in their community to hang out after school. From there, after we got all this information, then it's time to figure out, what do we do with this information? How do we take everyone's wants and needs, build consensus, try to prioritize, and put that into built form? What we want to do, of course, first, is figure out, well, how big does this library need to be? There are a lot of ways that we calculate how big a library needs to be. It's not just one way that we do that. So this page describes some of those methods. Of course, we look directly at, what did we hear? How much do we need based on the master planning engagement that we do? That's kind of step number one. We also looked at service population. So with as fast as this community is growing, we anticipate that over the next 20 years, the service population for this library would be between 23,000 and 26,000 individuals. With that, and with the community engagement that we did, that put us at needing a library at around 32,000 to 35,000 square feet over the next 20 years. Now, we kind of back-checked that with other methods. Wisconsin, Wisconsin is a state that has a lot of really great library standards. They're kind of leading the nation in those. So we look at those standards. We look at the Dane County Library Services. And then we also look to our neighbors for precedence. One thing to note, when you're looking at libraries, you want to look at recently built ones. I'm sure most of you know libraries done 30 years ago are completely different than libraries done today. It is not just a place for books. Actually, sometimes the square footage for books is even less than the community spaces that you're doing for people now. That's study rooms, the maker spaces, the community rooms. Those are the ones that are really factored in now that weren't 30 or 40 years ago. So we just included four that are being built recently. When we compared all of that, it showed that that plan for around 32,000 to 35,000 square feet is spot-on for what we feel like you all would need over the next 20 years. And then you'll see in the document, there's a program. When we talk about program, it's different than the programming that's done with the library. This is really, what are the spaces? How many square footage, or how many square feet do you need? All of that came up to about 34,500 in our conceptual layout. And then we get to the ID-8 phase. This is kind of the fun phase where we start to see, what could a floor plan look like? And what could renderings look like? One thing that we want to note, this, these are not construction documents. This has not gone through a design phase. This is a high-level conceptual idea of, here's one way we think that the library could work for this community. We did a couple of visioning meetings with the group, too, to see what kind of look and feel would this community want. That's what you see in these renderings. So these aren't designed, they're conceptual, but these renderings are very powerful when you do go to try to get donors, funding, sponsorship. These are tools that can really help you in that process. We used the existing site of the Friends of the Library to look at this. As someone mentioned earlier, it's between two schools. It's walkable to neighborhoods. It's really a great ideal spot for a library. There is a little bit of a slope. There's some natural drainage. Those things can all be accommodated very well, and we're considered in our cost opinion for this. This is a look at that library. We had a lot of different iterations that we went through, but some key things we looked at is visibility. Visibility is huge in libraries. You have to be able to keep supervision of what's happening in your library. You also want views to the outdoors, especially on that site. It's really good to make sure you're connecting with the natural environment that's around it. We also looked at acoustics, and this plan set the library up in zones. We want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable in a library. It's rare to get shushed in a library nowadays, so we want to make sure that you have quiet spaces for those who do want to be focused, but a way to kind of acoustically separate areas, like the children's area, because we want them to be kids. We want them to love going to the library for playdates, because they get to engage and really become interactive with the library. So it was really important to the team working on this, that everyone felt comfortable and that that was a priority for laying this out. Another thing you see here on the bottom, it was also important that there are multipurpose spaces that could be used after hours. They want this library to be an amenity for the community and set up in a way that the community can use it after the library is closed in the evenings. And then, like I said, here, based on some of the visioning meetings, this is an idea of what the library could look like for Cottage Grove. Just a couple of different views here. It was important to get that warmth, to be able that you had an identifiable entry. Also, there was talk about having a drive-through drop-off, and that's really important today to make sure that it's accessible for everyone. If you just need to drive up and drop off, we have that planned on the site. And then Andrew is going to talk about the opinion of probable costs.
So Lori took all the fun slides, and now you get to listen to me talk about budget.
Yep.
So the way we approach the budget, we approach it really holistically, looking at the total project cost, not only what it's going to cost to construct the physical building, but what are you putting inside that building? What's the furniture? What are the design fees going to be? Even down to what sort of site amenities do you need? What sort of site improvements do you need? So everything on the site for this library is included in that budget. And what we've done here is projected a low range and a high range in $20,000, $23,000, and then project that out into $20,000, $30,000, based on recent history of cost escalation. As you probably know, in '21, '22, it was out of control. It's getting more under control now, so we've taken that into account. But still, you can see that there's a pretty large difference between what you would have spent today versus when it could actually become a potential, as Melissa was talking earlier about the 2008 plans that would have been $7 million. So that's where we are today. So from that, there are, you know, a few next steps you can take, and obviously, it's really up to the leadership of the community to decide which path to take for this. The biggest part is that funding piece, working with the village in other capacities. For your other facility needs, we understand that the money that you have can't cover everything for all your facilities. So it's really incumbent on you to understand, all right, what are your priorities? What are your goals? And how do you get there? And let's create a roadmap for that. On the flip side, it being a library, the nice thing is you're able to fundraise for some of it. I don't think you're going to be able to fundraise for the entire chunk there in those $20, $30,000, but it is an option. Once all of that plan is in place, and you have a really clear understanding of how and when you're going to fund this, then you start talking about design and construction. And that piece of it, design could take 12 to 14 months. Construction is probably going to take 14 to 18 months. So you're looking at, you know, two and a half to three years from the day you say go, until you're actually cutting the ribbon for the library. So again, thank everybody for their involvement in this process. We, as the experts, could not have done it without your input and your understanding of the village of Cottage Grove and your greater service area. So again, thank you for everybody being involved, and look forward to your next steps.
Thank you, Andy, and thanks a lot, Lori. Any questions for FGM from either board? Comments?
Yeah, Lori, can you just maybe explain, and sorry, Andrew, too, why this 20-year master plan would be relevant, like how it would still be relevant in 10 years or 15 years? years? Obviously, we put 20-year master plan, so it's good for 20 years. But is this something that will be usable in the future?
It will, yes. And one thing that we want to say, and I think even someone said this earlier, the intent of this 20-year master plan is not to sit on a shelf. This 20-year master plan needs to be a living, breathing document that you revisit every couple of years. But the intent here is that, in the conversations, we tried to project, what is the service population gonna be? How is the community going to change? How is technology going to change? So this is going to be something that you can work towards and know that, okay, if it's gonna take us five years to build a library, and we planned for what you needed today, you have already outgrown it by the time you walk in. So you really need to build it for 20 years, because you don't get a large sum of money like this very often. So you want to make sure that when you build it, you're doing it right, and too many times, communities, the moment they step into that building, they have outgrown it already, because it does take several years to plan and build it. So this 20-year master plan, the intent is that it will get you in the right place for that future, for the next few decades.
Was there a master plan from 2008?
So there were, there were some renderings, and yeah, there was a master plan. We have, yeah, we had some of it, but it wasn't, I mean, done to this extent.
I guess I'm curious as to how accurate it was with respect to the village population. If we'd spent $7 million, would it have taken us to today with service needs?
Yep. So I think, so the original, the master plan from 2008 was for 24,000 square feet, which is, if you go to like the minimum amount, like if you do, the space needs worksheets through, and do the minimum amount, 24,000, 25,000 is probably what we could get away with in Cottage Grove for the population that we are at now. But I think, like, again, like looking forward, and then with all of the community inputs and the engagement sessions, we realized that, you know, obviously, there's huge gaps here, we don't have community centers, senior centers, places for people to go, third spaces where you're not, you know, you don't have to buy a coffee in order to sit and do and work. And so that was the feedback that we got, and which is how we got to the square footage that we're at now.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from either board?
I think I'll just add, too, that the service population being the 23,000 to 26,000, I mean, we, there are calculations, we obviously have like all of the village's population projections through 2040, plus the state has other projections that we used for the surrounding area, too, and we're pretty conservative in that method. I think we used like 5% of the service population from the additional surrounding municipalities and held they grow through 2040, so I think that that number is conservative, but probably fairly accurate. I know that's just a question that I've gotten repeatedly over the last week.
I have a quick question. You mentioned the Wisconsin state statutes or in the Dane County requirements, and there's some, how did you put it, some of the most forward, there's a lot of them, right? I guess.
Yeah, there's different standards you have to look at.
Yeah. And so my, I'm wondering, because I've heard there's to be some discussion about the state law, if there was a change in what those statutes look like, or what Dane County required, would that change the recommendation at all, or is what is here truly what is needed regardless of what the state requires or county requires?
Yeah, so those standards are, not only do they drive the building, but a lot of it, too, is how you operate a library, how many full-time staff, number of hours, those sorts of things. So I don't think any of those would change significantly enough to change this, because this is also consistent with national standards. The Wisconsin public library standards are actually very similar to what's used for, you know, nationally across it, too. So I think the changes that you see might be more in operating costs and things like that. I don't think anything would change dramatically enough to change the size or the types of spaces that you need here. And really, like Cindy said, those are minimums that they set, so 24,000 would be kind of the bare minimum, where we see the difference between the 24,000 and 25,000 and the 34,000 as in those extra community spaces that is really dependent on your community. Like, you know, here, there's two multipurpose rooms, because you don't necessarily have another community space right now, so it's kind of those extras that get built into it that increase that square footage.
And one of the examples that is being looked at for the state standards, we did take into consideration, there's a specific criteria for how many computers you need as part of a library, and we looked at that and kind of went with, all right, what do you think we could actually get away with that Dane County and the state of Wisconsin would see eye to eye with us on, just because we know the technology's changing so much that you don't need a computer lab's worth of desktop computers somewhere in a library anymore?
Yeah, you just need a dedicated computer library, now it's, do you have a place to put all the charging stations for, you know, Chromebooks or laptops, so.
Just for clarification, is it that the statutes dictate the standards, or just that there's a statute that says you need standards to go towards?
I don't know that we actually looked into, everything that we were looking at was standards, so more recommendations as opposed to law.
Correct. Thank you.
So those are Dane County standards, so Dane County has probably the strictest or highest standards in the state, and I know they are going under, I just had coffee with the director on Monday. They are going through a revision now, because a lot of those are outdated, but like you mentioned, the computer lab is a thing of the past, and because in Dane County, you get a, basically a reimbursement for like the number of users outside of your municipality, Dane County Library Tax, which I know you're all familiar with, they're revising, you know, a lot of those standards so that they, and that'll probably change, too, because if you don't meet them, you don't necessarily get the Dane County Library Tax, however, because they're gonna redo it. A lot of, so a lot of the square footage, which is probably the most relevant to this conversation, the standard has to do with the collection size, which is based on the residents that you're serving, specifically your municipality, but obviously, we took into consideration the service area, too. And again, that's for a 20-year, you know, the service area of 23,000, our collection is gonna be based off of that. And then the other thing I'll add is that, you know, multipurpose rooms and maker spaces, you know, don't necessarily add number of staff, there is, you know, a standard for a number of staff that are needed. Square footage isn't a standard, but, and when you add space in terms of like conference rooms and stuff, you're not adding, you're not sticking a librarian in a conference room to monitor that, so I think that's another question I get a lot, too.
So basically, if the standards, or the laws, or the recommendations from the county were to change, it wouldn't impact this plan too much, based on what you've done? Thank you.
Just kind of, oh, go ahead, please.
No, I was just gonna ask a follow-up to that. In terms of the staffing, is that, so do we use a ratio to say like one librarian per 10,000 square feet, or something like that?
So it's not per, it's per population.
Per population.
Yep, not per square footage.
Thank you.
I can, I know the facility subcommittee had done an operational, like a staffing organizational chart, too. I'm happy to share that with you, if you haven't seen it.
So between now and when we do have fiscal capability to, you know, hit our target here, our vision someday, we have a lot of really good programming. We just heard from six or seven different people who spoke to the importance of the village programming that has been put on and appreciated across the board. Is there anything that you'd advise for any interim space opportunities to help to continue to support the programming we're doing, help grow and enhance the programming?
So as far as physical space to support that, I think the village is doing a great job at looking at all of that, because you're looking at so many different facility needs, and all of those facilities being community-centric facilities, you need community-centric spaces. So all of those, whether it's village hall, parks department, police department, even library, obviously, those are all being looked at with an eye to community spaces and multipurpose spaces that the community is able to use for a variety of reasons.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. Yeah, thanks, John. I want to thank FGM, village staff, the village board, the library board, and most importantly, Cindy Kell Nelson, for all the hard work that went into this report. We're all aware of the fiscal realities in front of us, but as Lori outlined, this project created a valuable asset for the village that we can use for years to come. It was definitely a labor of love that will provide, you know, value for years to come, and I really appreciate everyone's passion, drive, commitment, and especially Cindy's commitment here to see this project to fruition, and again, just thank you all for all the hard work and all the time put into this, because it was a lot, so thank you.
I don't know if we get a lot of clapping at board meetings. I'd like to also thank Lucas Franklin and Carl Schweitz. They said on our, they're not up at the table tonight, but they said on the facility subcommittee, they're both MLS-certified librarians, so they gave us a lot of really good feedback.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks again, Andrew and Lori.
Thank you.
That's all we have tonight, so Cindy, you wanna do the, you need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, yes, we'll do a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Okay. Call in favor.
Sorry, sorry.
Hi.
Aye.
All right, thanks. And then the library board, or I'm sorry, the library, the village board.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Brittany. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Heidi. Non-debatable, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.